Good afternoon, it is June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to now call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from the Honorable Mr. Matthew Chandler.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, we thank you for the rain. I thank you for the city and staff here and I ask that you will be a part of this meeting. God, we thank you for all the blessings that you can give the city. We pray that we have a clear mind tonight and a unified heart as we make decisions that are best for Orange as we continue to grow and prosper in your guidance and care, Father. We pray that we say in Jesus' my name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Yes. Mr. Mortimer just said amen with a little thunder, right? That means it's right. It's always nice to have an actual pastor on your council. We know that prayer was heard, so. All right, on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. At this time, we'll move to citizen comments. All, uh, at this time, comments are taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, we have Mr. Mike Green. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Mike Green, five zero seven five White Oak, and living there a little over twenty years. Uh, y'all know what this is all about. This is about the road. Uh, the last few weeks, we've got some emails and some talks about some, I guess, some extra money that came about. Thank goodness for that. Just had to talk with Mr. Spears. Looks like we're definitely on the agenda. There's some guys, it's worse than it's ever been. I'm picking up hubcaps out of my yard two or three times a week. Um, it's almost like people just tired, they just, it's, it's terrible. Y'all already know this. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna beat it, beat it to death, but hey, thanks for consideration and I hope we get this taken care of because I know there's some people that live past me that I only have about a hundred yards of it to deal with, some of them all the way to the end of the road. It's, it's a bad deal, okay? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time?
I would like to add to that. I live further down from him. My name is Becky Greer. I've been here before the council numerous times, everybody's, yes, for the same reason. And, um, it's only worse and it's just so frustrating because, you know, for a road like ours, we are in the city limits. We pay the full city taxes. We all have our own city and water, um, except for a few of the newer people. So we really feel like we're getting an extra jab and rarely get a lot of services. And I know that's just the nature of, we were annexed many years before that was changed and, and we understand, but please hear us, um, it is really bad. Um, we've had multiple people with damages to their trailers because of vibrations and we are trying to go even less than the speed limit for sure. Um, but we've had, some folks have even had, um, their glass break, so on their wind, on their passenger side window and our suspensions are shot. I'm not even gonna get mine realigned, there's no point. Um, never mind trying to drink your coffee on that road, forget it. Uh, it's just ridiculous. Um, I mean, I really ask for you, each of you, if you have time, if you're the ones voting on that, please drive down our road, go all the way down to the end. Um, I do feel really bad for those having to go up and down multiple times with bringing children. Our, I know, we know their buses are going down, there's routes to that as well. There's sides that are actually coming off, the edges are depleted. Um, I mean, I definitely, um, I think it's beyond. We've been after this, I think I've been coming to you guys for ten years and it's been probably a problem for about twelve. Um, so please, um, you know, I mean, I have pictures, I mean, I can show you how bad some of the edges are coming off, my video, this one shows, um, I have to miss a little bit, and there's huge potholes. You wouldn't think that's like from the city. I mean, there's like a lot of, that is on the edges, pretty much one-third down. I mean, it's really bad, but like I said, I know the rains are making it worse. I know that the storms and the flooding made it worse, but it's really bad. I please, I wish y'all would go look and if there's any way you can fit us in, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Yeah, I'd like to. I'm her husband and, uh, just to let y'all know that last rain, about four foot of it has washed out. If y'all don't fix it, I would just prefer if y'all just scraped it and put shale down. It'd be much better because it's, there's about a three-inch gap, about four foot, about three hundred yards, it's just completely gone. So I've had to change my, uh, front shocks, I mean, my struts, I've had to change my rear. My son's had to change his on his car, it just beats it to death. And just asking for y'all to...
It gets unstable to pass...
We don't even have to have the whole road. Uh, about a hundred yards upstream of Mike, if they would do that down to my house, that would take care of a lot of it. I mean, just a partial, just to give us some relief. Just scrape it and rock it if you have to, just something to make it a little better. That's all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? All right, thank you for your citizen comments. As we stated before, please note it's not that we do not, um, understand your plight. We are not allowed to respond, but we can respond later on in the meeting and, um, I will get to that and I will address it again as what Mr. Green stated. In case you didn't hear it, I'll say it for you again later on the future of that street. Okay, uh, moving on to city and staff announcements and city events, Ms. Allison.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I hope everybody got in here without getting too wet. I did, but here we are. Um, the Explore Orange Convention and Visitors Bureau is excited to announce our, uh, our Fourth of July Concert and Fireworks Celebration, so we hope everyone comes out and celebrates Independence Day with us. Uh, it'll be Friday, July fourth, at the Riverside Pavilion, that's on, uh, Simmons Drive, for an evening of freedom, fun, and fireworks. We'll have live music entertainment, food vendors, kid activities, and a spectacular fireworks display, so this event is sure to be a blast. So the gates open at four o'clock. We'll have live music from intensity bands, uh, from five to nine, with a fireworks show to immediately follow at nine o'clock. So this is, uh, free to the public and, uh, coolers and chairs are welcome. And so for more information, you can call Explore Orange, uh, follow us on Facebook or, um, check out our website at the CBB. Then also, hopefully this rain, it rains itself out and, uh, the Explore Orange team has been hosting picnic at the pavilion every Wednesday from eleven AM to two PM at the Riverfront Boardwalk and Pavilion, that's just right down here. For everybody that's here, we hope to see y'all at lunch. It's just literally a block down. Um, we have a weekly rotating lineup of food trucks. Uh, this week, tomorrow will be Three Three Seven Smoke or Mr. Sims Catering, that's his, uh, food truck, and then Taste of Happiness, and they have all different kinds of lemonades, so it's hot, come get you some lemonade. Uh, remember to bring a picnic blanket or a chair and again, follow Explore Orange on social media or check out our Facebook page. And, uh, while we've got some athletes in the house, I'd like to talk about, uh, the Orange Recreation Center. Y'all check that out, it's super cool if you haven't been there. It's a great facility, uh, residents of Orange are free and non-residents, it's a, uh, a small, five dollar a day membership fee, I believe. Um, so check that out, there's a pickleball tournament coming up, there's weekly activities all the time, and then of course, the library just right here, there's always something going on, so, uh, come check out game night, all kinds of stuff, so, hope to see y'all at, any and all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Allison. Okay, so we have a very special night, um, besides talking about the wonderful things going on across the city and things that we need to definitely take care of. I was perusing through Facebook and I saw this post about this team from Orange, Texas that went all the way to Santa Fe and kicked some butt. Because from what I heard, y'all scored eighty-one points and only gave up nineteen the entire weekend, so I asked if you would come and let us honor you and to celebrate you and thank you for representing our city. So with that being said, we have a proclamation and that proclamation is from the office of the mayor. Whereas the Orange, Texas Twelve U All-Star Girls Softball Team traveled this past weekend to Santa Fe, Texas, where they competed in the state tournament against twenty-three teams from across the Lone Star State, and whereas over the course of several days of competition and many games played, the Orange, Texas Twelve U All-Stars Girls Softball Team successfully punished every opponent with grace and elegance, scoring eighty-one runs and only allowing nineteen runs to finish the weekend undefeated as the two thousand and twenty-five USA Softball Twelve U Girls State Champions. And whereas on this amazing display of hard work and perseverance was brought to the diamond by Justice Marshall, Riley Castillo, Laura Lee Willem, Cameron Bro, Riley Peavy, Alina Rubin, Eleni, or Ilani Etheridge, Jalen Bortier, Leah Bach, Logan Hayes, Christina Doucette, Michelle Martin, Bentley Hall, and the coaches were A.P. Castillo, Zach Peavy, Clay Bortier, Jay Ford, and Ryan Hall. And whereas the City of Orange is proud to have been represented by such amazingly talented, intelligent, and beautiful young ladies, today we wish to honor you as a community that truly takes pride in the youth of our city. Now therefore, I Larry Spears Junior, Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, do hereby proclaim June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five as Orange Twelve U Girls All-Stars Day in the City of Orange, Texas, and do hereby offer on behalf of the city council and citizens of the City of Orange, our heartfelt congratulations for a job well done. Congratulations. All right, stand up, come on. All right, now before we take the picture, I'm gonna pass these out, but y'all gotta flip though that bling bling on, all right? Yeah, I like that. All right, so who do we have first? We have, um, Justice Marshall. All right. How are you doing? We have Marsh, uh, I'm sorry, Riley Castillo. Laura Lee Willem. Ms. Cameron Bro. Riley Peavy. Alina Rubin. Okay, Ilani Le- Etheridge. Jalen, is it Bortier? Bortier. Congratulations. I should've called, uh, I should've called you first to make sure I had it right. Leah Bach. Logan Hayes. Christina Doucette. And Bentley Hall. And then of course, we have our coaches, uh, A.P. Castillo, Zach Peavy, Clay Bortier, Jay Ford, and Ryan Hall. Okay? So y'all gotta squeeze in, like, really tight. Oh yeah, you gotta have the trophy, yeah. Get the trophy. Make sure we don't drop it.
Do they need to open their folders?
Uh, they can, but you can open your folders if you want to. And we will just stand behind you as council and get a photo that way.
You guys need a screen down.
Yeah, gotta get, get it, get it real close.
Pull some of me taken, see if you can go down to that part.
Justice, come around.
The photographer, yeah. Let me help y'all out. All right, everybody say cheese. Here, we can get close, get close. Oh yeah, here we gotta get closer, we gotta get closer, y'all. Get close, 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 there we go. Yay. All right, congratulations.
Good job.
Any, uh, comments? I'll let y'all make any comments, any comments? Anybody?
All right, so once again, congratulations to you young ladies. Um, I, I'm very thankful that y'all were able to make it tonight. Thank you to my sister here for, uh, making the phone call and getting everybody in. Um, it's one of those things where, uh, a lot of times in southeast Texas, it's all about football, football, football. And so to see our young ladies excelling and doing what you do, we just wanted to come, have you come and honor you and, uh, thank you for making Orange look even better. Each, and, uh, good, good job and hopefully y'all can go back to back, right? Yeah? So who spent the most? Which parent? All right, well, thank y'all. You're welcome to hang out, we won't, we don't have a long meeting and it is raining. You get to hear some cool stuff here in a second, so, uh, if you wanna leave, you can, but if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to stay and hear what we're finna talk about. All right, we move on to the consent agenda, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular city council meeting minutes, and June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, special call city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item seven, ordinances. Consider an ordinance of the City of Orange, Texas consenting to the Orange Field Water Supply Corporation petition and resolution regarding application for creation of the Orange Field Special Utility District, setting forth other matters related thereto and providing that this ordinance shall become effective form and after its passage and adoption. Mr. Goodson.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, as some of you know, uh, government law firm has also approved and decided to represent the City of Orange, uh, to represent the Orange Field Water Supply Corporation, your neighbors of the West, and that, uh, representation is handled by my partner, Kate Leverett, and she's going to claim to you the request that they are asking for a conversion in the form of their entity.
Yes, so I have a different hat on. I represent the Orange Field Water Supply Corporation and we are working to convert to a special utility district. So a water supply corporation is actually a nonprofit corporation and it does not get the benefit that a governmental entity does, and so they're looking to convert to what's called a special utility district. And as part of that conversion pursuant to the Texas Administrative Code, we have to get consent from any city wh- whose bound ETJ crosses our certificate of convenience and necessity. And our CCN goes into the City of Bridge City, the City of Vider, and the City of Orange. Uh, the City of Bridge City and the City of Vider, they've al- already approved the consent for us to move forward. Um, the biggest question I get from the city councils is how does this affect us? It doesn't. We continue to keep our same exact customers, it's just a, uh, matter that a part of our CCN crosses your ETJ. So we're hoping you all will approve it so that they can move forward to, in order to be a little bit more efficient and turn into a special utility district, but I can answer any questions that you all might have.
I want just for clarity, we're not responsible for any fee adjustments or anything.
No. You're not responsible for anything, you're, no.
That's edited for the record.
Yes, no, you're not, you're not responsible for anything.
Let me jump on that too. I was at a softball turn, I was at a track tournament last week and a guy was like, "Man, you're killing me with this Orange Field water," and I was like, "No, bro, bro, it is not us."
Everything's the remain status quo, it's just because a little portion of their boundaries crosses your ETJ and so that is why you're, you're just approving the consent saying, yes, you can convert to a special utility district. If anyone asks, like I said, City of Vider and the City of Bridge City, they've already approved theirs.
Okay. Any questions, any questions or comments? Mr. Goodson?
Just to say, when you were a little bitty baby, uh, I represented the Maurice Field Water Supply Corporation, went in to convert it to the Maurice Field Special Utility District, which Kate now owns. So I understand where Kate's at before a different city council and, uh, just to let you know that the city has already entered into one of these agreements and I think it was a very good thing for Maurice Field and we're looking forward to it.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, on to item eight A. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with USG Paper LLC at seventeen fifty IP way, Orange, Texas. Incentives are in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand per year over a two-year period with a total amount not exceeding four hundred thousand for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Treyhand?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up to the earlier EDC meeting where the EDC Board of Directors took action and now it pivots to you as the council with a first reading today followed by a final reading in two weeks. So I'll turn it back over to you and I'll ha- be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, I'm actually happy that you are here today because there's gonna be several items on this agenda that I would love for you to hear and now you can go back and tell your friends in the backyards of how this really works. So the Economic Development Committee works to help us bring in new business. We do not bring in business, but we let them know that we're open for business. The, the awesomeness about an EDC is that we're able to work with the people who are buying out international paper. We were able to give them four hundred thousand dollars to help them with incentives and infrastructure on coming into our city to help us have jobs and to help us grow. They pay taxes to the LCM School District and things of that nature. That four hundred thousand dollar investment from the EDC brings in seven hundred and fifteen million dollar project. So that's an exponential return. So we didn't go get them and make them come, but when they say they wanna be here, we say thank you and we give them an incentive for choosing us over another entity. So that's how the EDC works and you're, you will hear about another really, really good one in a few items. So any questions or comments for Mr. Treyhand? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a, uh, motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Treyhand. Okay, on to item nine B. Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC concerning a timeline extension through December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five for Childs Manufacturing and Building Supply. Mr. Treyhand?
Mayor, I need to accuse myself from this. I...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treyhand.
Thank you. So a quick update, um, great news in terms of Brad Childs and his team beginning construction at the site. Uh, it was a long, tough path in terms of walking through the storm drainage plan as well as the text dot curb cut along the frontage road, but now they're off and running and so we support an additional timeline extension to allow more time and to also consider weather delays that may be along the way, uh, you know, as we move forward. But the project's moving forward, it's under construction and it's great news for the city and great news for Brad and his investment team. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, any questions or comments? I will say that I'm very happy for Mr. Childs. I love seeing the pictures. Got an update from you today, very happy for you, brother. I know it's been rough. It's not always dealing, easy dealing with the state, but you've, you've persevered and so happy to see what God continues to do for you and your business. Okay? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Treyhand. Item nine B. Consider a motion approving a, I'm sorry, nine C. Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive with BCS Orange seven B LLC, seven Brew at thirty-one thirty-one North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Gravie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just to get our bearings on where the project is located, uh, thirty-one thirty-one North Sixteenth Street, some of us may know it as the former Ayers Allstate Building, but it is also just across the street from Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, Whataburger, Whitewater and all of those businesses there. So we're very excited to announce that seven Brew will be coming to this location. It's approximately a seven point, a two-point-seven million dollar capital investment and the incentive dollars will go towards demo, site work, and concrete. So the acquisition of the property is approximately one acre and this is, this project is permitted by right with a CS zoning designation and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions? concerning a timeline extension through December thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for Childs Manufacturing and Building Supply. Mr. Treyhan?
Mayor, I need to accuse myself from this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treyhan.
So a quick update. Great news in terms of Brad Childs and his team beginning construction at the site. It was a long, tough path in terms of walking through the storm drainage plan as well as the text dot curb cut along the frontage road. But now they're off and running, and so we support an additional timeline extension to allow more time and to also consider weather delays that may be along the way, you know, as we move forward. But the project's moving forward. It's under construction and it's great news for the city and great news for Brad and his investment team. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, any questions or comments? I will say that I'm very happy for Mr. Childs. I love seeing the pictures. Got an update from you today. Very happy for you, brother. I know it's been rough. It's not always dealing, easy dealing with the state, but you've persevered and so happy to see what God continues to do for you and your business.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Ch- oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Treyhan. Okay, on to item nine B. Consider a motion approving a reclassification of the C V B Coordinator position to Visitor Services and Events Manager at a job grade thirty, non-exempt position and entry pay of twenty-five dollars and four cents per hour and standard employee benefits to be funded by the Convention and Visitors Bureau slash Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. Mr. Treyhan?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, as you know, I serve as the Director of the C V B and we have Ms. Devon Williams who is with us tonight, who serves as the Deputy Director for the C V B. So I want to state first and foremost that this is not a new position that's part of the C V B staff. It is a reclassification. And let me just share a few talking points from that perspective and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So first of all, I want to share that this is funded by a restricted hotel occupancy tax. And basically, for every room rental in the City of Orange, there is a fifteen percent hotel occupancy tax that is charged. Of the fifteen percent, seven percent goes to the city, six percent goes to the state, and two percent goes to Orange County. Again, it is not general fund. It is restricted through hotel occupancy tax with the purpose of promoting tourism in the hotel industry. So just a quick highlight in terms of the budget, so we can all refresh our memories as a result of it. We began fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget back on October first of twenty twenty-four with a one point nine million dollar reserve fund. So of that, there was an additional six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in projected revenue that basically we estimated we would have two point five million dollars in that fund to operate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So as a result of that, eight hundred thousand dollars in expenditures was formally approved by you as a council. And the breakout was five hundred and forty-seven thousand going to the C V B and two hundred and sixty-eight thousand that you graciously approved for other organizations throughout the city. For example, the recent Bass Mastery event was graciously funded by you at some level to help support the hotel industry as well as tourism. So that being said, what we're proposing is we would like to reclassify this position and basically it captures Ms. Williams' vision for the future of this department in terms of minimum requirement of a bachelor's degree with event management and tourism experience in the two-year window, a master's degree preferred. Just so you'll know, the current budget impact of the position as it states today was budgeted sixty-one thousand for this budget year. The entry-level position comes in at fifty-two thousand for the like-budget year. However, the salary range on the job grade thirty ranges from salary grade A to E, which is a range of fifty-two thousand to seventy-one thousand over a four-year period, of which over the next three years, we will also accrue additional hotel occupancy tax to support the expenditure associated with this. So basically, we ask for your support for this consideration. We'll certainly be available to answer any questions that you have and to help you have a better understanding. But please, let me state, this is not a new position. It is a reclassification.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? I think that what we do and what is being done by our C V B, for those who don't know exactly what all the C V B does, that is all your July the fourth, that is your boat races, your jet ski races. How many of you have been to Orange Tober and enjoyed that? The Gumbo Cook-Off, they put together events where I believe we do fourteen events per year that are all free for our community. And so this is definitely something that is a blessing. And do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, on to item nine B. Very excited. Consider a motion approving A, I'm sorry, nine C. Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive with BCS Orange Seven B LLC Seven Brew at thirty-one thirty-one North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Gravitt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just to get our bearings on where the project is located, at thirty-one thirty-one North Sixteenth Street, some of us may know it as the former Ears Allstate Building, but it is also just across the street from Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, Whataburger, Whitewater and all of those businesses there. So we're very excited to announce that Seven Brew will be coming to this location. It's approximately a seven point, a two point seven million dollar capital investment and the incentive dollars will go towards demo, site work and concrete. So the acquisition of the property is approximately one acre and this is, this project is permitted by right with a CS zoning designation. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, very excited for, there's actually pictures of the business over here on the drawing, but you can also look it up. It's called Seven Brew. They're a company that we didn't know much about and they came to Orange and said, we want to open here. So we welcome them and they will be opening on Sixteenth Street here in Orange, Texas, right next to, like right by the C V, no, what is that called? Sonic, right by the Sonic area, all up in there. So another business for our community. Okay? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gravitt.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item nine D. Consider a motion accepting the resignation of Darryl Coward from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Knoll?
Derek Coward has served on the Planning and Zoning Commission since twenty twenty-one and his resignation email is in your agenda packet.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Knoll. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And now I wish to extend our heartfelt thanks to Mr. Coward for his service on that board and look forward to maybe, if he would like to return one day, we welcome him with open arms. So thank you, Mr. Knoll. On to item nine E. Consider a motion appointing blank to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an unexpired term ending September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Knoll?
Because of Mr. Coward's resignation, there is one vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission and there are five applicants that are listed in your agenda packet.
I'd like to know if Jerry Sawyer?
Okay. We have a motion for Mr. Jerry Sawyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
No.
Okay, that's a no. Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
No.
Okay, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, four to two. Okay, thank you. On to item ten A. City Manager Report?
Mayor and Council, good evening. Just a couple of things. I'm going to be out of the office Thursday and Friday and going to get in on that legislative front date. Friday, July fourth, as y'all already heard, is City Holiday. So the offices will be closed for that. And then some sad news. We lost one of our city family members, Ms. Nedra, Ms. Nedra Francis, yes, thank you. And her service is going to be Saturday at eleven at the Starlight Church of God in Christ in twenty-eight hundred Bob Hall Road. And with that, so that the folks from the library can attend her service, the library will be closed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coombs. The City Council Report, starting with Ms. McKenna?
I just want to say that Nedra was a dear friend and a great lady and she will be giving us great condolences and prayers for her family and her husband. He's a sweet guy as well. I also want to say thanks for everyone for being here and congratulations, young girls. So that's really wonderful and we're so glad you're here. Come July fourth to the fireworks. You're going to have a good time there. You can really blow it out. And come to the picnic at the pavilion on Wednesday. So that'll be fantastic.
All right, thank you. Mr. Childs?
Honorable sentiments, Ms. Mary here and congratulations, young girls. That's absolutely amazing what you've done.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
Absolutely, ladies. Congratulations. That is quite an honor and I appreciate you what you've done for the city of Orange. For those of you that can, make sure you do come out for the Fourth of July picnic. If you're traveling, may God's grace be around you and cover you. So be careful and enjoy yourselves.
Okay, Mr. Burge?
Yes, condolences to Ms. Nedra's family and congratulations to you all. Redcoff.
All right, Mr. Chandler?
Yes, congratulations and thank you to folks who love and come and come. I appreciate you guys and city staff. They've probably worked on bringing business in and having fun events for us to do. There are things to do in Orange, so appreciate that.
Ms. Salter?
Congratulations, you guys. And I'll hand condolences to her.
And I will close by, we do have an executive session, but I do want to say once again, as you have heard, Ms. Nedra was truly an amazing woman. She's a family member. We don't talk around here about being employees and bosses. We're a family and she was a major part of that held everything together. And so we definitely send our sincere condolences to the family and we thank God for the time that we are allowed to be in her presence. I want to thank you, young ladies, for coming out on such short notice. Congratulations. Very excited for you. I love your rings and you get to go back, well, school's out, so you can't really tell all your friends that today was your special day. But if you get in the car and your parents start driving really fast, make sure you let them know that that doesn't mean they won't get a ticket, okay? That just means that today is your special day. So if y'all are going to go out to eat somewhere, tell them, today's my special day. Give me a discount, all right? Or a free dessert if it's Castle. They just say it's somebody's birthday and you're good. All right, well, thank you all once again and we will now adjourn to close executive session. Deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real properties authorized by section five five one point zero seven two. Real Property Union Pacific Francis Yard, four, forty-four hundred Tulane Road. And also deliberation about real property, First Baptist Church, Orange, seventy-six thirty-seven Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Orange, Texas. Thank you all for coming. We will reconvene later, but it sounds like the rain has stopped, so y'all might want to go now. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.